Good morning. We will call this special call meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen in the City of Natchez to order. We will ask you at this time to please stand for our prayer. And I'm going to put someone on the spot this morning, only because I know she can be put on the spot. I'm going to ask Caroline Deason to come and say the prayer for us. And after the prayer, we will join together in saluting the flag.
Father God, in the mighty name of Jesus. Lord God, we come, Lord God, this morning thanking you, Lord God, for another day. Thanking you, Lord God, for continuing, Lord God, to give us the breath of life. And we just want to say thank you. We want to thank you, Lord God, for the Mayor, the Board of Aldermen, Lord God, and all that make up, Lord God, this, Lord God, congregation that of people. I want to thank you for them, Lord God, the decisions that they make, Lord God, that they give it, Lord God, with their whole heart, Lord God. I just want to thank you for the people of Natchez, Lord God. Let them know, Lord God, that everything is being done, Lord God, according to what you would have it to be done. Lord, I ask from the Father that you be with every director, Lord God, every, Lord God, people that work with, with, Lord God, them, Lord God, to do what is needed to be done for the betterment of Natchez. Lord, I just want to say thank you, Lord God, for everything that you're doing for Natchez and everything that you're going to do for Natchez. I give you praise, Lord God, this morning. I give you glory in these things that I ask, in Jesus's name I pray. Amen. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Let us together salute our flag and offer our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We'll ask the third to administer the roll call. Good morning.
Alderwoman Hall.
Here.
Alderman Frazier.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Davis.
Here.
Alderwoman Irvin.
Alderman Dillard.
All present, excelled. Alderwoman Irvin, here.
Thank you, Ms. Dillard. We at this time will welcome visitors. Before we welcome visitors, we have someone here, Devon Heath. And I want to ask Devon to come up, and I'm going to come meet you. And also, we have with the Stratton, Stratton Hall, if you'll join me, we have, we have a great announcement to make. And I would like to invite members of the board that would like to join us, to come join us, especially our Chair of Tourism, Sarah Carter Smith. And Alderman, come on. Y'all, this is a good thing. This is a good thing. We, we attended the Governor's Conference on Tourism last week. And it was a special, special time to be in Jackson and to celebrate with other communities across our, across our state, all the progress that has been taking place during a time when the rest of the country has been, in many ways, shutting down. Mississippi's been thriving. And at the top of the list, when you look at communities thriving, we have Natchez. And Natchez brought home some real honors that were given at that, at that conference. And, and I'm going to ask y'all to hold these. And, and we're going to explain what they are. So, every year, communities are recognized that go above and beyond in what they offer in ways of tourism. And Natchez this year received the Best Small Festival Award for the Mudbug Festival. And it's quite an accomplishment when you consider the number of small festivals that are held throughout our state each year. And while we were there in Jackson with the whole state watching, we were able to see a really impressive video that showed the crowd, that showed all of the diversity, everything that was taking place at that festival. And it also showed beautiful images of Natchez. And so, I want to publicly acknowledge Visit Natchez, the group Crooked Letter Productions, and all of the work that Arden Barnett, Hugh Stratton, John Norris, Tate Taylor, the whole team, but also our team, our police department, our fire department, our Public Works Department. None of this would have happened without you guys. And so, we want to just say congratulations. Best Small Festival of the Year. We did it again. I also want to say this, a very special award was given this year, and it is for our best investment partner, looking around the state, who has invested and truly given so much of their, their time, their resources, their enthusiasm for the local community. And here again, Natchez, we were absolutely shining because of Tate Taylor. Tate won that award, Mississippi's Best Tourism Investment Partner Award. And on behalf of the City of Natchez and Tate Taylor, we, we just want to say congratulations and thank you. Again, a beautiful video was there for all the state to see. And it singled out so many things that Tate Taylor has done for Natchez and for our region. And again, the videography in this, in this video was impressive. There is no city in Mississippi that can compare to our views of the river, our amazing bluff, but most of all, our diversity and the beauty of our people. And so, we want to say thank you, Tate Taylor, and thank you, Stratton, on behalf of Tate for being here. And I'm going to ask now that our chief has made it, Chief Daughtry, if you'll come up, Chief Arrington, you'll come up, and also Justin Dollar, if you'll come up, because these three individuals made all of this happen. The security, the safety of our city, and the beauty of that bluff. And Justin, I'll never forget, right before the Mudbug Festival, I went to meet with Arden, and he was sitting in the gutter of Canal Street. And I said, "Arden, where are you doing?" He said, "I'm sitting here just because I can't." He said, "I've never seen a gutter this clean." I said, "You definitely can't sit in them in New Orleans." Arden and I have been speaking, communicating over the weekend, and I was hoping he might be here, but I want to say, Arden Barnett has expressed such appreciation to Tate, to John, to Visit Natchez, but also to our police, our fire, and to the wonderful men of Public Works. So, let's get a quick picture. Y'all want to say anything? Share anything?
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate what Arden said, because it would not have been possible without the City of Natchez, without the Public Works, the, the police and the fire departments, and you wonderful people that have been so supportive of everything. Hank Jr., who had Mudbug, we're going to do it again. So, it would not have been possible without that, without you guys, and Visit Natchez, of course. So, that is, no. So, thank you.
And Devon, it was so exciting to be there with you, our leader of tourism, and you had the whole gang there.
Yes.
We had everybody from Visit Natchez to the convention center. I think Natchez is, I think the only contingent that outnumbered us was Visit Jackson, and only because they were hosting the conference.
That's right.
Yeah. We really appreciate what you're doing for us, Devon.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll get one more picture, and then, then we have other awards to be made. I'm going to ask you all to have, to take your seat, but everyone else stay up here, and we'll ask Alderwoman Irvin to join us right behind you. I've got some awards all the way behind you. Y'all, we have another amazing presentation to make. I'm going to ask Chief Daughtry to come back up. So, y'all, the, the State Convention, while we were in Jackson, while we were in Jackson celebrating, and I tell you what, Bean, that, I want to say a question first. Bean, that you are, Sarah Carter Smith is the Chair of Police Committee. Wow. Your committee's doing really well. I admire that. The city, I want to just say, in addition to the awards we were given in Jackson at the Governor's Conference on Tourism, at the very same moment, awards were being given out on Mississippi Gulf Coast at the Crime Stoppers Convention. And I wanted to be there badly, Chief. I couldn't be at two places at once, but Chief Daughtry represented us well. And something that I'm very proud of is that Chief Daughtry, as soon as he became our chief, hit the ground running and resurrected Crime Stoppers. As a result of that, his contributions have now been noted on a state level. First of all, Mississippi Crime Stoppers Top Supporting Law Enforcement Agency of the Year, Natchez Police Department. And as if that's not enough, Mississippi Crime Stoppers 2021 Law Enforcement Coordinator Lifetime Service Award, Joseph Daughtry Senior Chief, Natchez Police Department. I want to tell you something. These are the top awards, the top awards that Crime Stoppers gives for law enforcement in the state of Mississippi, and we got both of them. I think this speaks volumes for the job you're doing and for the team, the men and women in uniform, and all of the new officers you've brought on. We, we, we just couldn't be more excited, the new equipment, but especially what's now happening for people to call that number and to safely give information that can lead to arrests and very possibly save lives.
Hundred percent anonymous.
Hundred percent anonymous, yes. Alderman, would you like to say it?
No, I'm just excited. I think we've seen a difference in what Crime Stoppers makes in the community, and we've had more crime solved. And so, it is a definite great thing to reinvigorate it, and you did a great job on that. Both the Police Department and the Sheriff's Department have worked hard, so it's awesome.
We're very excited. Thank you, Chief. Chief, few words, acceptance speech?
Only thing about it, Mayor, thank you. I was honored, was humbled by this for our department to receive this, but again, like I tell you, a lot of this stuff, I know I get a lot of the credit for, but it's a team effort. The men, the men and women in the Natchez Police Department have bought into the program. They're sharing the program. And then, a lot of this would not be possible if it wasn't for the support of you and the board, you know? So, I thank you guys and ladies as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Everyone else, congratulations.
We're going to resume our seats and get, get started with the meetings. Y'all, I want to say also, also last week, Natchez was named the newest member of Mississippi Main Street Association. Also last week, the very historic building on Franklin Street, the Demus Drugstore Building, was named to the State of Mississippi's Top Ten Most Endangered Historic Places List. And so, Natchez is getting some attention. It was very nice to see people from all over the state last week joining us and celebrating the Natchez Renewal. With that said, we will now welcome our visitors. We have Brandon McRaney. Brandon, how are you?
I'm really well, thank you.
Good.
Last time I saw you, several months ago.
Yeah.
And I had an idea, a big idea, and a little, little dream of mine, and a lot of work, a lot of effort has gone into getting the Bigfoot Birthday Bash organized. Gave each of you a little, little something for your refrigerator at home. It's got a full schedule of events on the backside. Beautiful logo work. That's thanks to Vidal Blankenstein and our team at Rhino Graphics for coming up with a very fun festive logo. It's going to look great on a T-shirt. And T-shirts and all that can already be ordered. One of the main things we did or wanted to do this year, for the first time, was to make sure we built awareness about what this, what we're doing. Recognizing the 300th anniversary of the first documented account of a Bigfoot encounter in North America, happened in Natchez in 1721. We've got a great lineup, a unique lineup, Thursday night. It's going to be a lot of fun. We even partnered with a local business where we created something called Bigfoot After Dark. So, there's going to be something for adults to do every night, as far as entertainment and getting out and enjoying Natchez, but we want to make sure there's stuff for the whole family. So, Thursday night, we're going to kick things off with a movie night on the bluff by the bandstand, Harry and the Hendersons, and then the classic, The Legend of Boggy Creek. And while that's happening, Big Smo and Afro Man will be playing on Main Street at Locust Alley. And I believe, I believe they'll be bringing more people in from out of town than Harry and the Hendersons, but it's, it's still going to be a whole lot of fun. And again, building awareness for the event was, was key this year. So, we took, took a big step. We made a pretty big financial investment with a marketing firm out of Texas. And it's paid off. We put out a press release several weeks ago, and within a couple of days, it had already gone out to hundreds of news outlets across the planet. I saw it in Japan, Australia, Germany, with a whole little write-up about Natchez, Mississippi, and Bigfoot. And so, I'm still bumping into people, I'm trying to tell them, "I didn't know anything about that." Well, I want to change that this year. So, we put together a stellar show, great music all day long on the Saturday. We got the 5K run. We've got Grammy winners performing. We got three of the top Bigfoot experts in the world speaking at our event. This is more like a 10th year event instead of a first year event. But, you know, Bigfoot, you got to go big. But, when you go big, you also end up with a lot of expenses.
Yeah.
And, I mean, just to fly, we're flying in, one of our speakers and his assistant from Canada. And we've got another professor, Jeff Melstrom, who's primatologist, breaking in, finding him, that's from Indiana. Just those alone, I mean, several thousand dollars just in traveling expenses. So, what I'm here for today is to thank you for all the cooperation and help I've already received from the City of Natchez. And y'all are on, on our print work already as, as a sponsor, because I couldn't have done it without you to this point, but I'm asking for a little bit more. Financially, we're, we're still trying to get to where we want to be. And I've sent a proposal in, asking for $2,500. I hope y'all can find it in the budget, and I think this is something that's going to grow. We're going to do every year, and I think it's something unique, and it's diverse, and it's going to be something very special for Natchez.
Thank you so much. We are very excited about the festival, and thanks for all the work you've.
Is there any questions or?
We'll open this up for a discussion and see, you know, what the pleasure of the board is and if they have any questions for you.
Yes, I have one.
Yes, Alderman Frazier.
Is, is that in the budget already? I mean, we, we have been sponsoring over the years, I know that. What was, what was the last sponsor?
This is the first.
This is actually the first.
This is the first.
But I know you came here last year.
Well, I came in, I came in a few months ago. Just to, just to announce what we were wanting to do.
But this, let me, I'm trying to get it together. This is not the first time you came here.
He came a few months ago.
I came up here a few months ago to.
Five months in a row. We want to keep that trend going. You know, I will ask this question. Are we already doing some in-kind sponsorships in terms of security, public works setups?
Yes.
Helping with stage setups or?
Well, I know there's maybe blocking off the road on, on Broadway there, and I know that we're going to have help with the police with the run that morning crossing. So, yes, there's, like I said, there's so many things that are already helping me with.
I would say this, one thing that we did, we made no financial commitment at the Hank Williams Jr. event, but what we did was in-kind, and it involved helping set up for the sponsors, helping to set up the stage, some things like that. Do y'all have a need for that?
We do. We need, but honestly, we could, money is a big issue right now.
Yeah.
It really is.
Yeah. So, I'm just thinking maybe a combination of the two.
Yes, a little manpower, any, any help is, is greatly worth it.
Where we made a financial donation, but we also, being a first time event, I know we have to, you know, watch the money, see how it goes, but we also have a way to help in terms of manpower. I'm just looking for input, for direction.
I just wanted to ask.
Yes, Alderman Irvin, you had a question.
She had a name, but I had a mind. Okay, so what I was going to say, you know, we're looking at manpower, and I don't have a problem with that, but then that's going to go into our overtime, isn't it, Mr. Dollar? With those employees overtime putting up, or would they be, if we were doing in-kind service for this event, would they do it from seven to three, or would they do it after hours?
It's going to depend on exactly when we can do it.
Okay, okay.
On Friday, you say.
I'm just looking at interfering, you know, with the, the overtime budget that we had set aside for, you know, the extra money for adjudicating properties and that kind of thing.
Alderman Smith?
I was, my thought is possibly, could we take it under advisement? Not, not to get back with you in two weeks, to get back with you very shortly.
We got 10 days.
I know. What, what, our problem we're getting into now, to be perfectly honest, is that I love that we're having so many events, but we want to be fair and equitable to all of them. And I don't know what, I need to look at what we've been doing so far.
Well.
It gets to be difficult when now we have an event every day in Natchez, and if everyone comes to for sponsorship, I mean, it is going to be somewhere where we're going to have to take something away from the other things we do, like paving, I mean, some other things that we need to be doing. So, I, that being said, I, can we possibly maybe get a range or something, and then we can go back and get our, we can have a quick special call hole, like on the phone?
Yes, yes.
To say, "This is what we've done for everybody else, and this is what we can do." Because we have appropriations, like for some things that have been wrong forever, the balloon races, obviously, we know that brings in, and we've done an appropriation. So, we know every year how to budget it. But now, these other pop-up events, and not that it's pop-up, because you've been planning it for a while, but things that are starting to happen, I feel like we don't know exactly what to do to be fair.
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Hall?
I agree with Alderwoman Smith. This is a wonderful event, but we're also having, we have a department that's going to be needing equipment. So, I, I think we need to take this under advisement as well.
All right. This is what I'd like to suggest. I'd like, when we, when we worked with Arden Barnett, our Public Works crew during regular hours, they were able to assist greatly in setting up a stage, set up of things needed for, for sponsor, exhibitor tents or, or various booths for patrons. I'd like for us to go ahead and allow that to go forward immediately to assist y'all, and then we'll take this under advisement and then make a very quick decision on what, what else we might could do. Alderman Frazier?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Your suggestion, but I understand, but we're going to do that, we're going to leave things that need to be done undone in the city.
Absolutely.
As I was driving around a few minutes ago, coming here, we already got one project that they're doing, and we have a number of projects. Public Works is already tired of it. So, if we're going to do that, we, we're going to have to go into the budget to spend some money on overtime, because there are other projects in the city that need to be done. And as, as the lady said, I think we need to take this under consideration and, and talk about it some more, because right now, we just strapped for employees and doing things.
Alderman Smith?
Could we possibly get, just as soon as we can after the meeting, a list of our sponsorships for events? Who's gotten what, what events we donated for?
All right, Alderman Dillard, and then Alderman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our question, I, it may be in my imagination, but I thought that there was an event application that either we read through or whatever, or we were looking at. And for these kind of events, that we have to have time to plan these things. And I, I'm sure that, you know, in what you're doing, you have to have time to plan it as well. You've obviously done a lot of planning here. But, Mr. Mayor, am I mistaken in that? Did we forward a, a request for an event so that we can notify the police and the fire in a timely manner?
Oh, they've been meeting with police for months. We've had a number of meetings.
Did we receive an application?
Mr. Mayor, I think what Mr. Dillard is alluding to?
I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
You need to be recognized. Alderman Dillard still has the floor, and then Alderman Davis, now come back to your boardroom.
And what that allows us to do is to use the resources that the city has in the most, you know, straightforward manner, because as you, you've heard the discussion. The other thing is, is that this is a request for an appropriation or sponsorship. We have a fiscal year that we go around, and all, you know, it starts October 1st. So, months before that, we're planning, you know, our budget, and there's a lot of effort that goes into it. So, I would suggest to, not only you, to, to any other entities that are requesting appropriations from the city, be mindful of our fiscal year and our responsibilities. We have to be responsible to the taxpayers that we are including. And that's what Alderman Frazier's alluding to, that's what Alderman Hall is going to allude to, that's what Alderwoman Smith is going to allude to. And it's a great idea.
I guess there was just, I felt like I had done everything that was asked of me before.
You have.
You have. You've gone above and beyond.
Well, I, this is the first time I've heard of, for a request for funds. If you, if you made that before, I didn't hear it.
No, no.
Actually, no, I have.
I haven't shared the information about the event.
You shared a lot of information. If I could, Alderman Davis and then Alderwoman Hall, and we're going to have to bring this discussion.
Alderman Dillard, he hit on the point that I wanted to talk about.
Okay, he did, okay. Alderwoman Hall?
I think what Alderman Dillard is alluding to, there is a process, but he's already been here talking about this event. But we passed the ordinance a few meetings ago regarding the process for anyone who wants to do an event to go before this committee.
Okay. Alder, Alderwoman Irvin?
And I just want to add this too. Alderman Dillard made a motion just recently about sponsorships. He said, "We will wait until the second quarter of the year before we did any others," I mean, any other funding.
I don't, since you referenced me, I don't think I included that in that motion.
It was sponsorship and.
No, it was for expenditures, salary increases, both hourly and salary.
So, sponsorship's not included?
No, I did not word that in there.
No, that was not included.
Okay.
I want to just say for the record, I actually think that we as a city need to express extreme appreciation to Mr. McRaney, and I detect a little bit that we've been kind of beating, beating up on him. And I just want to say, with all due respect, we have someone who has come out of his own time and invested money, energy, time, creativity for months now, and at the last minute, coming to us as many have in asking for support. And I believe it needs to be given consideration. I'm celebrating the fact that we have had historic events now, five months running, and as a result, we've had historic sales tax returns, five months running. The city doesn't create this, our economy does, and the people in our economy. And anyone who's going to go out and put this much effort in pulling together a three-day event that's drawing people from possibly all over the world, we need to give them every consideration. Now, I totally understand that we might need to look at the budget, as Alderman Smith has said, and look at what, what resources available. But with regard to Public Works, something that's going to solve our Public Works issues and others is to keep our sales tax going. And we keep our sales tax going by having events. I meet with people all the time who want to have events, and you know what I say? I say, "Yes. If y'all want to get this done, do it." Now, does that mean the city can sponsor every event? No. Obviously, we have to look at the event, see what the likelihood is that it will bring tax revenue to the city. I do think going forward, we need to have a process. And this could actually be handled through our Tourism Committee. When an event needs a sponsorship, these are growing pains. We've never had so many events. When an event needs a sponsorship, requests one, we can have a process, and it could go through our Tourism Committee, and then it could come before the whole board. So, I do admit that, you know, this is, you know, last minute, but I, I want to say, let's let our tone be that we are extremely grateful to you, Mr. McRaney.
Thank you.
And.
And I do appreciate everything. I don't mean, I'm not, I'm not offended or, or anything. I appreciate everything. Like I said, there's already been so much cooperation and I'm very thankful for what I've received so far.
Thank you. And I do appreciate though that this board watches the money and that's what we've gotta do.
As a taxpayer, I appreciate it too.
And every one of them has made good points today. Alderman Smith?
I don't, I didn't feel like anybody was beaten up on him. Mr. Dillard's talking like that with everybody. I said, I'll take that. That is nothing. You do it because everybody is appreciative. But I did, I mean, I just Googled, there are cities with policies and I think that's, I, I think our, our tourism committee can come up with maybe a, a policy that works and it, and it, some of them, you know, very things specific. I think we can learn from other cities that have grown way bigger than us, that we're, maybe we're on our way to growing that big. So we can look at some ways and, but the thing we can do is get back with you ASAP. This won't be something that'll take ten days, okay?
Sure.
I appreciate it. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Mr. McRaney. We appreciate that. And tell the big guy we look forward to seeing him.
I will.
Uh, the next item, and this was a sponsorship, but I also wanna let you know, I've had a conversation with Ms. Posey this morning and expressed her desire for us to meet before she comes to the board for a sponsorship. She's also gonna be meeting with President Angela Hutchins with the board supervisors. We'll likely meet with her at the same time. This is a great benefit that she wants. It's actually a program to provide diapers and other very important, uh, items to, uh, to the young families, babies here in our Misslou area, but also senior adults. Um, and they are expecting this nonprofit to get grant funding in the future. And I've explained to her that we have a number of organizations that do this utilizing grant funds. Um, and the city doesn't sponsor those and it would be kind of difficult for us to open this door at this time. Um, I'll give you an example. We, uh, we have done some in-kind things to help, um, Dr. Myers and her, uh, Seeds of Change Ministry. But at the same time, everything she does is donated and through grant funds. Uh, if the city started doing this, you know, we would, it would be a hard thing for us to then say no to anyone. So, so just wanted to give you an update on that. Ms. Posey's a wonderful person in our community. We'll be talking to her soon. And we're gonna see what we can do to assist her in getting the grants she needs for a program through state and federal, uh, agencies rather than having to get them here locally. Um, so with that, don't believe we have any other business. We're gonna move now down to the department director's report.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Hall?
Uh, I know unfinished business.
Yes.
Our minutes from September fourteenth refer to this today's meeting. And I'll move that we accept those minutes.
Oh, thank you. And that is from the September fourteenth meeting.
Regular board meeting.
Thank you so much. Uh, so you're making that motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
All right, the motion to approve has been made by Alderman Hall and seconded by Alderman Smith. Any discussion? We'll call for the question.
Second.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next item, Mr. Johnston.
I received my report the other day in your packet. Himpel Construction Company change order number one, two thousand sixteen Tiger, with concurrent originally granted by the City of Natchez on April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. National Railroad is requesting concurrent with change order number one for the following. Forty-five hundred dollar credit for pipe handrail replaced with three-eighth inch cable and diluted toe board for two thousand dollar credit. And install perforated pipe drains along both sides of sheet pile at cost of six thousand five hundred. Lump sum of contract does not change.
I have the motion to approve the change order.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Irving, seconded by Alderman Smith. Discussion on the motion? I'll call for the question.
Oh.
Second?
Thank you.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, uh, our new Director of Recreation, Parks and Recreation, Ms. Nor Cole. Good morning, Ms. Cole. How are you? It's good to see you on the agenda today. Congratulations. This is your first appearance for the board as our new director.
It is. Good morning to you all.
Good morning.
I will ask for order. All right, Ms. Cole?
Okay, I wanted to start off with, um, I've been here for a little over a month and I've discovered that our Parks and Recreation and Maintenance does not have an operating budget. Um, our maintenance department, I'm sorry, I took this off. Um, our maintenance department really does not have any inventory. It doesn't have any tools. We have nothing really to maintain the parks or utilize for preventative maintenance at all. Um, and also parks, with our parks, recreation programs, events that we'd like to do, um, that's coming up for two thousand twenty-two, we have, we have no inventory. We don't have anything. So I'm here asking for our operating budget, possibly, um, something that would get us started or something that would be, uh, essential to us continuing to improve and set a foundation for us.
And Ms. Cole, I know you and I have met and we've discussed this. And I believe, uh, um, our recommendation would be that we work on this budget, uh, work on the needs, see where we could find the money and come together, uh, again to discuss this and possibly take some action at our next meeting.
Okay.
Um, I know, uh, this is an apartment that, uh, had not been, uh, maintained now for a number of years. And to my knowledge, as you now have taken the reins, you found that we don't even have the necessary, uh, equipment and tools to maintain playground equipment, uh, do the things that are needed such as, even though we have a landscape contract, we still need some weed eaters. We still need some, uh, equipment for dealing with, uh, overgrowth and, and, uh, keeping down weeds and, and re- replenishing play services.
Yes.
And we have done, we have passed a recreation bond. And I know you're gonna speak to us about that in just a minute. Uh, that bond is all new equipment. Um, I don't believe we did put, uh, tools and that sort of thing in there. So we, uh, we definitely need to get to work. And, and part of it, Alderman Smith, you had your hand up?
Just thinking, suggest that maybe she meet with the rec committee and with, with your list of what you think your, the basic needs are that can get you through and we can start building on that and then come back and then they can, you or the, the rec chair can present it to the board.
Okay.
That's a good idea. Mm-hmm, that's a good idea. Uh, we'll let these things go through our, the rec committee. Uh, in, in the meantime, I know you have planned a few events and I have found some funds in the mayor's budget that will help you with that. So we're gonna help get you across that hump. Alderman Hall?
Yes. We're thrilled to have Ms. Nor Cole here with her two maintenance men. We're still looking for her assistant with, re-advertising for that position. And she has been going to work since day one in the Recreation Department. So we're very happy to have her. And yes, we do need to work on this budget because there is nada, nada regarding any kind of equipment nor tools for recreation.
Uh, uh, well, it may, it may, um, account for why our parks look like they did. Uh, Alderman Frazier?
I had my hand up, Mayor, before, Mr. Frazier.
I didn't look at you. I apologize. Alderman Irving?
Okay. I, I do wanna say that, um, Ms. Cole, thank you for everything that you've done. I see the parks have made a tremendous difference. But I wanna bring to the board's attention too, we've known for quite some time that we have not had tools out there. That was what the previous director had had a problem with. We, she didn't have any tools to work with. We didn't have the manpower and we didn't have the tools. So it was brought to our attention that Public Works would have to go and anything that needed to be done, we were relying on Public Works Department to get it done. If it was a tree or limb, there was no pole saw, there was no weed eater, weed eaters, anything of that nature. Those things were previously brought to this board prior to you bringing in, Ms. Cole. So we knew that there was no equipment. There's nothing. There's no riding mowers, no, anything that's needed to service those parks other than grass cutting, nothing has been provided. So we thank you for bringing it to the board's attention.
Now, now, now's a good time. However, I would challenge you to look through the minutes and see under this administration where any of that was brought to our attention.
We've known.
Cause it certainly had not been brought to my attention. Alderman?
Yeah, I think we need to clarify that was the process. We had, we, either it was contracted out or Public Works did do some work. We had some people in there that did, you know, minute things. Um, but no, it was not brought, I mean, this is the first I'm having, hearing that we have no equipment in there. So the first time I've ever heard that. So we will definitely, um, get together and work on that.
I'm, I'm just excited that we finally have an department again and a director again. Alderman Frazier?
Let me say this. Ms. Cole, uh, I thank you for bringing this to the board. But let me say this to the rest of the board. This problem exists, is just not at the start. This, this started the administration going on back. That's not true because what happened is that Natchez Recreation Department had equipment. I know they had equipment because a lot of it was stored at the youth center. They had riding lawnmowers, they had trailers. Mr. Dollar, if he could sit, he would tell you that when they broke the Recreation Department up, they took one of their trailers. It had Natchez Recreation on it. If I'm not, and that's true? They had Natchez Rec, the Natchez Recreation Department had plenty of equipment. But this board had to foresee that we're bringing it to the front now that they need the equipment. It was equipment. It was power saw. It was, it was everything that they needed and it was stored at the Natchez Youth Center and Duncan Park.
Then who has it? It was stolen.
It was stolen.
It, it was stolen. It was stolen.
I, I will say this, actually, um, there have been several noted break-ins, everyone knows about it, over the past year. And it's actually been reported, uh, at North Natchez at the youth center. I'm just so glad we're finally getting on to this. We, um, we are laboring the point, I think we need to move on. Alderman Frazier, if you'll bring your remarks to a conclusion.
Let me, like I say, but they had the equipment. It was stored in, not just North Natchez Park, it was stored down in Duncan Park too. So I don't know what happened to the equipment. Like I say, it just got dispersed and the department broke up. So we're gonna try to work on it.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Frazier. Yes, Alderman Dillard?
Again, thank you. And, um, but I, I, I think this whole board, which, which the city does, it takes responsibility for. But we went through a long process of consolidating the City of Natchez, the County of Adams and the School District of, of Natchez Adams County and created a commission who hired a director. And they had within their powers the resources, whatever they wanted, could be brought to bear. And the reason that you're here is because that commission and that, that process was not successful at it. So, you know, you, we can take the responsibility for it and beat ourselves up on it. And I remember what Alderman Frazier done. There were four trucks and four trailers and four zero turns and eight weed eaters and six blowers. And y'all just disappeared. Now, no one has an idea where those are.
I'm sorry.
Alderman Smith?
I think there's some responsibility that needs to be had there because then, go to the commission. Where is this equipment? Where is it? City, county? Is it under Smize's garage in their house? I mean, where the hell is it?
I was before the commission.
Well, this was before the commission.
Alderman?
I was just gonna say, before we got in in two thousand sixteen, that is what we were actually told. There was no equipment to work with to maintain the parks from the director. And they even brought it to the board's attention. I mean, this is under their.
I would say this and I'm gonna bring this to a close. We need to move on in interest of time. Ms. Cole, thank you for bringing this to our attention today. The Recreation Committee will be meeting. The Recreation Committee will also take under advisement. Um, all of the comments have been made about missing equipment. If equipment is missing, we need to see why and where and when. Um, we'll move on. Ms. Ms. Cole, you had an update on renovations on facilities and parks.
Yes, um, we've met with the architects for the golf clubhouse as well as North Natchez Youth Center. Um, we laid out some groundwork and some goals and visions for each one moving forward. So that's already in the works. Um, North Natchez Youth Center, um, I was waiting on my, uh, maintenance people to get in and get hired so we can start cleaning that out. So that will start this Wednesday, um, myself and my two, my two maintenance guys. Um, also, I've been shopping around in regards to, um, uh, playground structure design specialists to come out and assess the parks, um, each one and just, um, give us, uh, some kind of degree of how and when we can meet those safety standards, the Mississippi, uh, safety standards, as well as working and talking with some, um, people from NRPA, which is the National Recreation and Park Association. Um, and so once they come out and assess our parks, they're gonna get with myself and Ms. Hall on basically our vision of what we wanna see each park look like. And then they will present us with a design of each park. And after that, then we will open it up for bidding and then we'll go from there. Um, also, uh, I wanted to say, we do have two events coming up, which is gonna be two movies in a park, one at North Natchez Youth Center on November nineteenth and the other one will be December third at Duncan Park. We've already solidified donations from Blue Bell Ice Cream, two hundred, uh, uh, cups of ice cream per movie. Um, local donations have been coming in as well as Del Monte has given, um, coupons as well as free cups of, you know, snacks and free for both events as well. And we still have a lot that are pending at this moment. So, uh, we're excited about those two events and we hope everybody can come out.
Great.
Great, thank you. And, and Ms. Ms. Cole, we also, this would be a good time to announce, being Halloween week, that we have some great Halloween events coming up. And these will be very good events for our children. Uh, Trick or Treat for Little Feet will take place downtown Friday, uh, from four to five thirty. Uh, at five thirty, the first ever Halloween Mut Strut will take place on Broadway. And it's a pet parade and, uh, that's gonna be a lot of fun. In addition to that, on Saturday, Longwood afternoon, a lot of music at the, at the wonderful, beautiful historic Longwood. Um, that afternoon from five to eight, uh, we'll have trunk or treat with the Grinch. Um, the Grinch, understanding we're already decorated for Christmas, wanted to show up and show out. So he'll be on Broadway. And, uh, and then there are a number of other community events, private events, parties, churches, doing things. Uh, and all of our local venues telling me they're gonna have live music on weekend. So it's gonna be a really great weekend here. Yes, Alderman Frazier?
Ms. Cole, uh, I would, I would like in the future reference, uh, anything that's involved in North Natchez Park, please inform me and let me know what's going on, please, Mayor.
Um, I believe I called you as well as sent you a email.
You said you're gonna get back. I got a couple texts, but I'm just saying, there's, there's no, no disrespect. Just let me know.
All right. Thank you. And Alderman Irving?
Okay, I was gonna say the same thing because the issue that I have with Jackway Park, and I think I spoke with you concerning the drainage issue that we have. There are stiff, um, limbs along the fence line that were not removed. Everything else was, but right there at that fence line.
Are you talking about, uh?
Toward the back of the park.
The back where the homes are?
Yes.
Okay. I can get my guys to take care of that as well.
Okay. And then when you get to Concord Park, the bathrooms, that was what needed to be done. Was there a budget created for that as well?
Yeah, we've, um, I've gotten with Richard on getting estimates for it. So we're waiting on those estimates and a quote for, to get that started for the restrooms.
Thank you.
For all the parks.
Yeah, water fountains, not just one.
Yeah, we're working on getting those done. They're on the list.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Cole. We do appreciate you. Uh, Chief Doltry, you're next.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
Oh, two quick things I just wanna ask the board's permission. Uh, one thing is, I've talked to the officers on the Natchez Police Department overtime frame. Um, and I, I think Alderman, Alderman Frazier can attest to this. I'm not sure when it was done. Uh, but social security has not been taken out of their checks. And the other thing is, uh, myself and Chief Arrington kind of pooled our people to see how they felt about it. And a lot of them wanted it for future reference. So contacting PERS, PERS had told me that I needed to get the board's permission to host a, like a town hall type thing with our employees where we can bring them all in and just, and get a pool, actually have them to actually vote if they want it or if they don't. So that's my reason for coming forward to the board today to ask that, if that's okay with you guys. you guys to host that, we can do it together, we don't have a problem with it, we just wanna give the guys the opportunity to make that decision.
Alderman Fraser?
May I, may I say this, Chief Doltry, I am so glad that you came before the board with this. This, Mr. Mayor, to the rest of the board, 30, 30 some years on the police department, they didn't even take social security out on us. And now, what happened is that my social security is, is virtually zero, but when you're a young person, you didn't know what was going on, I didn't know what was going on. So, well, we need to act on this as soon as possible, because this is planning for the future of the future employees, because what happened now is that these guys, they're gonna get a retirement, but social security will get them over, over the hump, because they, they might be saying, well, I don't get enough for retirement, but my social security gonna balance this out. And you are the first chief to, to come before the board, and like I say, I'm glad, they're doing it everywhere else, but I think they can take social security out of the fire department.
No, they don't.
They don't.
We're the only two departments in the, in the city, in the city, that knows to take social security out, now other agencies are taking it out.
None in the state of service here. Alderman Smith?
Would you clarify something for me, I'm just, so when, when they do have the vote, is it literally majority wins, you either take it out or you don't, do they have a choice?
Seventy-five percent.
It's gotta be seventy-five percent for it to happen. And so, will you have someone there that could be, talk about the benefits of both sides of it?
Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah, just so, just so they'll, somebody can educate everybody on both sides of it, because there are a lot of people that'd rather not have it taken out, because they could invest it and make more money, but I mean, there's a lot of people that don't do that, so.
A lot of people are the older ones, like, and I guess I'm one of them, that's, well, not that I don't want it, I don't have a problem with it, but people that have their time in, now they look at, well, I got 25 or so years, it don't make sense to take it out now, but I'm looking for the future of the younger officers. When they get older and, and they need that, to subsidize their retirement.
Okay, thank you, I'll make the motion then to, to allow the police chief to proceed.
And fire.
And fire, excuse me, police department, fire department chiefs to proceed with setting up this town hall meeting with their employees and two experts that can help explain all the issues to them.
All right, a motion has been made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Fraser. Any discussion on the motion? We will call for questions.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Chief?
The second thing is overtime. My officers have been coming to me because we're on a 28-day pay cycle for overtime. I did talk with Ms. Dillon this morning about some things, and I'm, I'm gonna ask the board's mission to seek, I'm gonna have to seek legal advice on it. Our officers are not getting overtime for, during their pay period, it's, we're on a 28-day cycle. I've contacted other agencies throughout the state, and their officers are getting overtime every pay cycle, every pay period, and, and that's something that I'm asking, I think it'll boost morale, because some of these guys are getting, not getting overtime until 28 days, till the following pay period. And from my research, and I'm still digging into it, that's why I wanna ask to seek legal advice, it's more of a policy from the city than it is a federal thing, because the federal law states what, what should be paid, but it doesn't say when it should be paid. I think the when comes from within the board, so I wanted to get you permission to bring that to your attention as well, to go before, and sit down with City Legal to make sure that we're in compliance, to make sure that these officers are getting their pay the right way.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Hall?
I'm gonna let the move that the chair of our police committee, yeah, with the chief and the attorney and discuss this, and bring it back to the board.
All right, do you have a second?
Yeah, Ms. Decent too.
And Ms. Decent needs to be included in that.
Yeah, Ms. Decent, I'm sorry, yeah, Ms. Decent.
Thank you, a motion has been made by Alderman Hall, seconded, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir, I just wanted to say that this has been brought to the board's attention prior to this conversation here, and we've had it in the new administration, because you brought it to my attention here in a meeting, and so I made a motion, and then I was told that you didn't have to make a motion, this is something that we will get done, if Mrs. Fortenberry was here and Ms. Dillon is here, she can actually share. That actually took place about four months ago, when it was brought to my attention, and you were here as well. I don't know if y'all got amnesia today or what, so all I'm saying is this, I'm just trying to refresh your memories, is that this conversation did take place, and that it was brought to our attention, and said we wouldn't have to have a motion for it, and that they would begin receiving their pay at each pay period, and, and that was supposed to take place at least three, four months ago. I know you didn't need a motion, because I was gonna make a motion.
I'm sorry, this, this discussion has not been held since I've been mayor and since you have been chief.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a reason to sit here and tell the untruth about absolutely anything.
But I'll tell you, we're getting it done today. It's just, I'm looking around.
I don't.
Chief, you the one come here and stood right here and told Ms. Irving, would you please remember?
Thank you.
Let's call for the question.
Alderman, I'm not saying.
The question has been called.
You can't recall the conversation?
The question has been called, I, I believe that, I believe we're becoming argumentative, and I'm gonna just rule any further discussion out of order, the question has been called, we will proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Today.
All opposed, nay?
This is.
All opposed, nay?
This is.
We'll, we'll take a roll call vote. Alderman Hall?
Aye.
Alderman Fraser? Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Irving?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Dillon?
Aye.
The ayes have it, motion carries, thank you, chief.
All right, Mayor, I got a phone call this morning from NOLA, I'm gonna give, with the board, get on your, you guys' schedule, we've been invited to come to Hattiesburg and Baton Rouge to look at their 24-hour real-time center, they wanna invite the mayor and the board to come to look at it, so I'm gonna get some dates and give it to you guys, 'cause I want, anyone who wants to go, they're welcome to come with us as well.
Great, thank you very much, thank you. We now come to city officials' reports, Alderman Hall?
Yes, sir. Again, I would like to thank Ms. Ms. Cole for her presentation today and her being a part of our team, very much welcome, thank you. Also, several of us recently met with some of our legislators, and Director Katie Blunt and Deputy Director Robert Benson from the Mississippi Department of Archives and History at Jefferson College regarding their restoration project, and I think we, that the board need to consider to begin our conversations in the future regarding the support for the restoration of Jefferson College and the restoration of the grand village of the Natchez area.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you, Alderman, Alderman Fraser?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Ms. Cole, I wanna, I wanna thank you for what you're doing, ma'am, like I say, I want you, I wasn't trying to be mean to you, I want you to accept my apology, I wasn't trying to be mean and ask you, and I asked you that question, so please accept my apology. Also, I'd just like to say, we lost, one of our city employees lost his mother, and I just wanna say that she had my sympathy, so that's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Fraser, yes, I was gonna mention it during my report, but our prayers are with, with Ms. Nifa and her family today.
All right, ah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to commend, I know there was a tourism summit here recently, I did not get to attend, but I've been told over and over by people in the community how well it went, Stratton's one of the people that mentioned how, what a great job that the, that the tourism department did in the city of Natchez, so I wanna commend them for that, and I'm glad you were attending, and Devin, he said he would give me an, an update, we're gonna have a meeting very shortly on that. And then, police committee, chief, since we've got these two big things we gotta be working on, let's, let's work to get our Safe City Task Force meeting set up for maybe the first week in December, because I think it's gonna be pretty, pretty busy with these other two pretty big issues for, for your department. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, thank you. Alderman Irving?
Okay, I wanna begin with, making Ms. Cole too, I did speak with her last week, and improvements in the park took place immediately, so I do wanna say thank you, Ms. Cole, for that, in our future conversations. I also want to say that when we speak here in this board meeting, I come to you with the truth, I have a good memory, and I'm sure we all do, maybe some people can't recall a conversation, but I come with facts, and that's what I speak to, is facts. I'm not here to argue with anyone, but I present the information, and I can go back in some of my notes and just pull them up as well, because I do record everything that I say here in a weekly meeting, so I do speak to facts and the truth. I also want to make an announcement, Warford, Washington Street area neighborhood watch meeting will take place at the senior citizen building on November 1st at 6:00 PM, our special guest will be our police chief and, or Mrs. Carol Green to attend our meetings. If you can't come, and the chief, the reason why I'm asking you to come, I just have to say this, a few people in the community has been asking, where is our chief, because I had a special guest down there, and they just want to shake your hand, say hello, meet and greet the chief. Ms. Green is doing an excellent job with presenting the information, absolutely no problem with any of that. The other thing that I wanted to inquire about was, just make an announcement, rather, about our event that took place last week, the COVID-19 event that took place where we partnered with the city of Natchez, the county, emergency management, and I want to say that it went extremely well, we had a lot of people in the community, another good turnout, Mayor, got over 100 people vaccinated this past weekend. There was also another organization that partnered with us that gave those that were getting their vaccinations for the first time, they gave them incentives to come in, had about 15 people to participate in that as well, so they got anywhere from $50 to $100 for getting those vaccinations, so it was really, a really good turnout. And last I have is, to make this announcement again, is Baton Rouge and the Greeks of Natchez presents the Halloween Fest. This will take place October 31st, 2020, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, at 500 North Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Street, trunk or treat, drive-through, food and fun, and so what they're asking is that as many sororities, fraternities to please participate as, as you can, so that you can make this event a success. And that is my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, thank you, Alderman Irving. Alderman Davis?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Alderman Dillard?
Ditto.
Thank you. We will move now to our next item. We have the city clerk's report, and Ms. Dillon, good to see you today. First item, approval of discussion on the claims docket.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Irving?
I just wanted to inquire, it's on page one in the docket, and it's a vehicle tow of Camry Jason Body Shop, was that a vehicle for employees?
It would have to be.
What department, yes, sir.
A vehicle tow, well.
I didn't know we had Camrys.
Oh, no, Jason's Body Shop. Yes, Chief, Chief Doltry, I think you can answer that.
Oh, okay.
Mayor, that was when our employee passed away, we towed her vehicle out of, out of the street, and we didn't have contact with family at the time.
Oh, okay.
So we towed it to the PD.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for clarifying that. Further discussion?
Um, yes, it's still on page one, I'm just inquiring, a two trolley at day rate, what's that, Mayor? It said traveling training, that's what the phone number is, but it said a two trolley, is that when the trolley was transit?
The transit, I believe, I, I believe that, I, do we have the invoice? You know, it's good to get these questions in advance of the meeting, I don't have the invoice in front of me, Ms. Dillon, do you have the invoice? You don't? You don't, it, it had to be where the trolley was used for a city event, and we can look into that and get an answer for you. Ms. Dillon, if you will, pull that after the meeting, so that you can provide an answer to Alderman Irving. Any further questions or discussion?
Oh, question? Yeah, I have one, one more.
Okay, one more.
It's 38.
Yes.
And it's a vehicle, I think this is in recreation, what, 126, phone number 126, and I just, what item is being repaired, it said a Natchez Ford, Lincoln Mercury, labor parts, what vehicle is being repaired?
Ms. Dillon, do you have that invoice with you? You don't? Ms. Dillon, if you would, please pull that invoice after the meeting, so that you can answer Alderman Irving's question. Any further discussion?
That's all that I have.
Thank you. If you want questions before the vote, please ask the city clerk in advance of the meeting, otherwise, it will be after the vote when you do get your answer.
Well, and I did call this morning to speak with the, Ms. Dillon, Mayor, but I thought we were being transparent and I.
We are.
Okay, so.
But if you have, but I'm just saying, we don't have every invoice at every meeting.
Okay.
And it is advisable that you would, call the city question. Question's been called, we'll proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The ayes have it, motion carries. The next item, approval of many dockets, it was a pleasure of the board.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, do we have any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Dillard?
And Alderman Irving, I, I wasn't familiar with it, but you ran a master's municipal clerk's training center for Felicia Irving?
No, that's, we're traveling tomorrow, at least this evening, I will be attending, and it's not a clerk's evening, it's a city, small city conference, they will be going small town conference.
What am I reading here, am I misreading this?
No, you're not, it's just stated wrong on here, I'll be leaving this evening, traveling to Hattiesburg, Mississippi, myself, the mayor, and Sarah Carter Smith, all of us should be here.
That's, that's correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, we had, in previous administrations, as a matter of fact, it's a longstanding, that any travel request have to be presented to this board for approval prior to the event, and I realize this is prior to the event, so that's in good state, but even the board has to submit and get approval for travel, if there are any expenditures that are gonna be incurred by the, the employee or elected officials. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Dillard, I would like for us to definitely take a look at our calendar, so we can have more advanced notice going forward. Alderman?
Mr. Mayor, this is in the minutes, the last meeting, uh, city clerk, it's on permission to, for the board to go to the, to the small town.
Well, okay.
It's approved on our last, I'm sorry, September 14th.
Travel to the small town.
Well, but the error being in the small claims docket, it doesn't say small town, it says, this is claim number 2808, Felicia Irving, mileage 2021, fall, master municipal clerk. So, it is a mistake, and all I was doing was responding to that, now that it's been corrected, I acknowledge it, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dillard.
I, I went to Ms., I was calling Ms. Bolesby, Ms. Howard, Tiffany Howard this morning, it's hard classification on that.
All right.
It is for the small town.
Uh, is it part of the three individuals who are attending?
Yes.
Alderman, Alderman Irving, Alderman Smith, and myself?
No, and your name is not here, Mayor, no.
Okay, we need to make sure that's added. Alderman Smith?
Just, this is crazy, this has gotten crazy, but it, it is named, she could only fit the three words on there, because it's named the city, the clerk, and then small town conference, so that, it is misleading on there, it wasn't by purpose, it's just for all she could fit on the timeline.
All right, thank you.
And then, I think, I don't know why we aren't all in here, but I did ask, I just texted him to see if she'd bring up our sheets, we have to sign the sheets, so it'll be on the next docket, it'll be fine.
All right, all right, all right.
This was clear.
Thank you so much. Alderman Hall, I commend you, because I know you asked me about this this weekend, and you did your homework this morning in advance of the meeting, and that's, that speaks well.
Call for the question.
All right, the question's been called, we'll proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The ayes have it, motion carries. We, thank you, I think that concludes the city clerk's report, we'll move to the city attorney's report, I want to welcome our friend Walter Brown today. So, we all are giving him a clap, you earned it, all the years of service in the city. Mr. Brown, I think we're gonna tag team on this one, I actually have a document that we just prepared this morning, been very busy over the last few days talking to the school board, various members of the school board, and members of the board of supervisors, and so y'all are seeing this now for the first time, and we had just emailed this out to them, we'll pass this down. This is a draft framework for our inter-local agreement regarding workforce settlements, and. And, uh, this is what will be presented at our special call meeting at two o'clock. But we wanted you to have a copy of it in advance. Um, Ms. Dillon, did you get one for the minutes?
Yes, okay, yes.
You did, okay. I also have a document that goes along with that. And this is actually the job description itself. So these really kind of work together. Um, so, of course, a lot of this will be discussed at two o'clock, but just to give you in advance, I have been able to meet over the last couple of weeks with both the board of supervisors and also with the school board. I've been very excited at the receptivity to the city, county, and school board working together, um, to bring on a workforce development director. Uh, this interlocal agreement is really phase one. It is what we've been calling the first bite of the apple. And, uh, I actually have a copy for the, for the press to, um, Ms. Griffey, I'll get this, this is, uh, after the meeting, we'll get this to you so that you'll see, uh, have it in advance of the meeting today. So what we're really talking about is an interlocal agreement, uh, that will allow the citizens of Natchez and Adams County to have better economic opportunities. And so the, uh, the city, the county, and the school board, uh, will form a coalition. That coalition will create a position entitled Director of Workforce Development at a salary of sixty-five thousand a year plus benefits. And a job description, you know, is attached. Coalition partners, these three entities, shall establish an operating budget for phase one, year one, in the amount of a hundred thousand to be split evenly three ways among the coalition partners. This budgeted amount should be payable in four quarterly installments by each coalition partner to Natchez Inc., which will serve as the coalition administrator and be responsible for all invoicing and accounting of coalition funds. Uh, the coalition partners will then immediately appoint a search employment committee to consist of eight persons. Two representatives of each coalition partner, two from the city, two from the county, two from the school district, one representative from Natchez Inc., and one representative from the Natchez Adams County Chamber of Commerce. Uh, the search employment committee shall immediately post the job opening with the help of the coalition administrator, that would be Natchez Inc. This job posting shall expire on November fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Search employment committee shall interview qualified candidates and make a recommendation of hire to the coalition partners no later than November fifteenth. Each coalition partner shall then be asked to consider revocation of the hire no later than November thirtieth. The reason for this short timeline is because we are up against major deadlines on major grants. And we will loop out on significant workforce development grants if we don't have this person in place by December. I just want to make that clear, that's why we're moving so quickly. Um, once hired, the director of workforce development shall work under the umbrella of the coalition administrator, Natchez Inc. Salary benefits, other expenses shall be paid by the coalition administrator out of the funds provided by the coalition partners, the three entities. At all times, the director of workforce development, while under the daily supervision of the coalition administrator, shall be accountable to the coalition partners until such time as another board of committee is appointed. The search employment committee shall act as the workforce development advisory board. And then the job description, a lot of work has gone into this, and I think if you look through it, um, it, it really covers everything. I think, uh, I think it speaks for itself. Um, at this time, there is some action to be taken. Uh, the others will be asked this afternoon to identify their two individuals. And, and it will be this afternoon, we will fully discuss this agreement with them. And we won't approve this agreement, we won't ask you for a motion to approve any agreement until we fully have this out with the other coalition partners. But at this time, to be prepared for that meeting, uh, I would like, uh, the board's guidance on who the two, uh, city individuals will be, uh, to serve on this search employment committee. Alderman Smith?
I do have a suggestion, I think, um, that you and, uh, Valencia is education chairman, that's, this is a part of our, our moving forward with workforce development and education. So I'm good with you all, you two, if y'all report back to us and let us know what they're doing.
Well, any suggestions?
I'd like to be on that.
At this time, we have a motion, I believe, by Alderman Smith, and the motion is for two to be the mayor and the chairman of the education committee.
Did she make a motion, Mayor?
She did make a motion. Make a motion.
All right, the motion has been made and it's been seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? We'll call for the question.
Call, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Irving?
Okay, so, education committee, where, where is that, the committee, I'm just, I'm just trying to.
It's under our charter.
No, 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 I didn't say any, I'm not questioning that, I'm just questioning, where is that on our subcommittee? You know, the subcommittee that you're given, is it there too?
Yes, it's one of the chartered committees. It is, recreation, uh, uh, we have, under that, we have recreation.
Just asking.
We have re- uh, recreation, ordinance, and education. Okay? Alderman Fraser?
Oh, that's all in one, education ordinance, all in one?
If you read the ordinance, if you read the charter, that's how our committees are defined.
Uh.
Alderman Fraser?
I understand about what you're trying to do, but, uh, I don't really, to be honest with you, I don't think you should be on there. I think it should be an alderman, another alderman, that's pushing it, but, but I don't have a problem with you starting it. But I, like I say, in the search committee, I think that it should be another alderman, not the mayor of the city of Natchez. Because when it come up, I think the supervisors, those are just going to be people who are not, some of those peoples are not going to be in the position like a mayor, some big ones. If they get the supervisors, I don't think, the president might be, they're just going to be somebody else. But I think you have too much influence on, on, on this and trying to get this pushed through, so I think it should be another alderman.
Thank you, Alderman Fraser. Any further discussion?
Call for the questions.
Second?
The question's been called, we'll proceed to a vote. Uh, we'll take a roll call vote, Alderman Hall?
Aye.
Alderman Fraser?
Nay.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Irving?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
The ayes have it, motion carries, thank you. We will have further discussion this afternoon at the two o'clock meeting. And, uh, I invite you to read over that material more so that you'll be prepared at two o'clock. Um, Mr. Attorney, we have one other item, and it is, uh, approval of Silas Simmons' bank reconciliation agreement. It is, the agreement, uh, goes back to a vote we had at a meeting, our last meeting, where we have agreed to, uh, contract with Silas Simmons to, uh, perform bank reconciliations going forward.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, and the, I received a letter from Silas Simmons, from Farah Hammond, a partner there. Uh, I just had that one question, may I oppose to you a while ago?
Yes.
This is going forward.
Yes, sir.
So that should be twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two.
Um, and that's correct. Uh, uh, this being, we're in October, this is for our new, new budget, so that is correct.
With that one change, Mr. Mayor, I recommend this.
All right, all right. Um, I believe, in my copy, I think, I think it's been.
Has it been changed?
It has been changed in my copy. Um, yeah, it has, in the copy I've been given, those dates were corrected, makes sense now. All right. Uh, do we have a motion to approve?
I have a motion.
Uh, the motion first.
Don't move.
Alderman Hall has made the motion, is it seconded?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Smith? Yes, discussion, Alderman Irving?
Okay, it's the second page, and I just had a question, reading here, it, um, it says, we may from time to time and depending on the circumstances, use third party providers in servicing your account. And so I understand the confidentiality and all of that, but what I want to ask, would that require extra pay? If they're involved in a third party? And would?
I would say based on that, uh, Madam Alderman, the pay would be ninety-five dollars per hour for those extra.
Would, would we be responsible for that pay or would they, that's the only thing I'm asking.
I would think you would be responsible.
So that, that's.
I, I think ultimately, we're going to pay ninety-five dollars. They're just disclosing that it may be a member of the staff and from time to time, it may be a third party. The ultimate cost to us is the same.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I want clarity.
I understand. Any other questions? We will call for a question.
Second?
We will proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
You want to take a question?
The ayes have it, motion carries. Yes, yes, uh, we, uh, we have before you, under the mayor's report, approval of a debt collection agreement. In our last meeting, we discussed the fact that there is a new law being used by cities now to collect municipal debts. Uh, debts on, uh, delinquent, uh, property fees for the lack of property cleanup. Debts on municipal court fees and even, even tickets and violations. In order now for us to contract with the Mississippi Municipal League, in order for their company, Municipal Intercept Company, to work with us in this endeavor, we have been asked to approve a debt collection agreement. Uh, the agreement is before you. Uh, I don't know if the attorney is ready to recommend that we, uh, I believe the attorney, uh, we just got this last week.
Mr. Mayor, I spoke with Mr. Callaway, he said he was good with it.
He was good with it? All right.
You need to do this too, Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Brown?
Actually, I, I think this is pretty boilerplate.
Yes.
I'm sure every city county got the same, same document.
They do.
Uh, it does require that you do name a coordinator from the city.
Yes.
So when you do take it up, if you don't do it today, you need to, uh, whether that's, that would normally be a city clerk or mayor or someone from the city.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Hall?
At our last meeting, we, we gave permission for our city prosecutor, Mr. Tim Cotton, to be responsible, to take charge of this.
That's with respa- respect to the municipal court parties.
Correct, that's what I wanted.
But then we have the others.
Yes.
Uh, I think, uh, I think we need to give a little thought to the coordinator position before we pass this. Okay?
We'll be covering all kinds of assessments, be they delinquent taxes, be they convictions in court, as the mayor pointed out. It, it could be right broad, because there's lots of municipal court fees that are never collected.
It's not.
That are sizable.
Yes.
All right, we will discuss, uh, that coordinator and who that should be within the city government and then bring this to you at our next meeting. All right, thank you so much. Mr. Brown, we appreciate you, um, uh, filling in for Mr. Callaway in his absence today.
Yes, sir.
The, uh, presentation of a lumer Natchez. Um, we are, we are, just as we have with other sponsorship requests, we're going to take this under advisement. But we do want everyone to see a presentation of what this is. Uh, Dustin, do we have something that we can put up on the screen about a lumer, a lumer Natchez? Uh, so what this is, a lumer Natchez, is a, a brand new event, uh, another event to take place November nineteenth to the twenty-first, six to ten P M. each evening on the grounds of Dunleavy. The event is free and open to the public. Light festivals such as, and it's amazing what can be done. I, I don't know if the video is available. There is a video that shows, um, that's not it, but.
No, that's not the video.
No, there's a video that actually shows the light movement on Dunleavy. And we've just received word this morning, they've been working so, so hard. Um, I'm going to just pull up a little statement here that we just received. Yes. It's, it's really hard, I'm just going to encourage everyone, this is coming up, as we said, November nineteenth to the twenty-first. And we want to encourage everyone to come out and see this amazing, uh, light show that's free and open to the public. And, uh, and Stratton Hall, I, I know you've been involved in this. And Stacy Conde, who organized it, couldn't be here. And, and so I would love for you to share a little bit on Stacy's behalf, if you'll come to the podium. The poet laureate of the state of Mississippi is participating this year in a lumer. Catherine Pierce will write six lines of poetry on the subject of rebirth, the theme of a lumer, which reflects the renewal taking place in Natchez. Each line will be projected onto the ground around Dunleavy. So excited, this is a coup, which will lead to more press. Stratton?
Absolutely. Al U Mayor, and, um.
Al U Mayor?
Yes, um, is a light-based event that will be at Dunleavy this year because obviously, um, with fundraising efforts, so Dunleavy has so graciously donated their space. Um, it is free and it's going to be open to the public. Not only will it be, um, lights projected on the home itself, they will have, it's like a giving tree. So you make wishes, so it's going to be all throughout the property. There will be different, um, exhibits, so you walk and enjoy the exhibits. Uh, like the mayor said, it will be six to eight words and you'll actually walk, um, through, they'll be illuminated as you walk through the poet laureate area. Um, so, uh, is, um, it's similar to Lunafet in New Orleans, if you want to go check that out online. Um, obviously, uh, New Orleans, that event lasts, um, several weekends. We're going to hopefully grow to that event, to that size event. Uh, but this year, we're going to start small and hopefully build, get larger and larger and larger. It's obviously, um, you know, something in order for, um, for, uh, Natchezians and visitors alike. The art component of hopefully the offerings that our community is, we're about to have the art, um, district in the Natchez area, so.
Right, thank you, thank you. It's an exciting thing, no action is taken, I do want to let you know, they have written a letter requesting, uh, sponsorship. And I believe in light of our conversation earlier with Mr. McRaney, this is something we'll refer to our tourism committee, uh, to take up and come back with, you know, report. Um, any questions?
I, I, I just, I just.
Yes, Alderman Irving?
When the tourism committee meeting, since I'm a part of that, um, tourism, will we let us know in advance so that way we can, um.
Certainly.
Time frame, because I have some appointments that I can't miss.
Certainly.
So, okay, thank you.
All right. Uh, any other questions? All right, with that, we already have taken care of our crime stopper's award, miscellaneous updates, however. I do have one thing that I need to ask the board for permission. I have been invited to participate in an airport conference that is taking place next week in Baton Rouge. It will require my travel to Baton Rouge and three nights of lodging to participate in the conference. The purpose of this conference is to attract a commercial airline to Natchez. And so I want your approval to attend that conference.
Don't move.
Second?
Okay, the motion has been made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Davis. Uh, any discussion on the motion?
Call for questions?
We'll call for the question. All right, we'll proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The ayes have it, motion carries. The, uh, the other item pertaining to that is we are working with the Natchez Democrat, uh, Ms. Griffey, thank you so much, in collecting letters of support. Uh, these letters need to be ideally on letterhead, showing that entities in our community see a need for air travel. Uh, we, at the tourism conference last week, we were able to meet with Mr. Sam Washington, who is the director of the airport in Greenville. When we told him our numbers, you should have seen his face, he could not believe it. Uh, they are very happy to be having, uh, fifty-four hundred travelers last year out of Greenville Airport, uh, utilizing commercial air service there. Uh, our study shows that we have eight hundred people a week traveling out of the Misslou. And that is driving to airports in New Orleans, Baton Rouge. Uh, our study shows that we have eight hundred people a week traveling out of the Missaloo, and that is driving to airports in New Orleans, Baton Rouge, Jackson, and other places. So if those numbers hold, we should have great volume here to support, uh, commercial airline here in Natchez. So, it is exciting. Y'all, I mean, a lot of work's going in, the department with the county, the, the airport commission, Mr. Richard Nelson has done an amazing job there. Um, yes, Alderman?
Just making a comment, since you're talking about the airport, I've had several of my neighbors, um, and their older, saying that their children would have visited home a lot more since they were away, had the airport been accessible.
Wow.
And so, that does bring them out, we do need our airport up and operational here in Adams County, so that is a win-win for Natchez.
It really is, thanks. Thank you, Alderman.
You have a letter, Ms. Jan, from an organization coming to you.
Oh, good, thank you. We've extended the deadline on those letters to Wednesday, um, which then will give us a couple of days to get them ready.
You said on the letterhead from the organization?
And, uh, letterhead is, is, is recommended.
Okay.
Also, I want to just, uh, say, we are looking forward to the small town conference in Hattiesburg, uh, this, this week. And in addition to, uh, my travel there, I will also be representing the city at a major political event Thursday in Jackson called Hobnaw. And it's a big-time event, I don't think Natchez has ever had a presence there, so I look forward to, to being there, representing the city. Uh, I'm just tying that on to the Hattiesburg trip. And, uh, and also I want to share with you a nickname that I've gotten at last week's conference. Uh, the, one of the top people at Mississippi Development Authority, he said that they have decided to call me Mr. Happy. He said, because all of their good news is coming out of Natchez. And, uh, that's pretty cool, isn't it?
Awesome.
Isn't it cool? And, uh, it was, it was rather overwhelming being at that tourism conference, and having people from all over the state coming to us and asking us what we're doing. Obviously, word's gotten out, things are going really great in Natchez. Uh, I don't believe we have an executive session today. And so this is a record meeting, let's make all the others the same.
Mayor.
We're going to end in record time. Alderman Davis?
Don't forget the, uh, the police, doing the blessing of the fleet Friday.
Oh, thank you. Um, in fact, the chief just sent me a text, I'm going to look and see, uh, oh, man, you're on top of it, Alderman Davis. The blessing of the fleet at eleven-thirty, no, eleven o'clock, eleven o'clock of the Natchez P.D., everyone's invited to the blessing of the fleet. And I want to tell you, when I got word that we were doing that, Chief Daughtry, I just said a prayer of thanks that we have someone, uh, thinking like you do, and realizing that a blessing of the fleet is exactly what we should do. With that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Second.
A motion made by Alderman Davis and seconded...